Nobody has any questions, moving on. It is recommended that the Board of School Directors approves a tuition agreement between Kids' Peace National Centers Incorporated and the Exeter Township School District for special education services for student eight six eight two three two four for the 2023-24 school year at a cost of $170 per day or a total of $30,600 per year.
Dr. Battler, I'm sorry to interrupt. Regarding the one prior, can we have an explanation of what the transition planning is?
I'm sorry, yes, absolutely.
The Reading Area Community College, does anybody know?
So, my understanding is that field trip is for part of transitioning from secondary education into next phases and out of school. So, giving kids an opportunity in career education, post-secondary life and such.
Thank you very much.
Am I going too fast? Oh, okay. All right, sorry, I just wanted to make sure. It is recommended that the Board of School Directors approves a contract between ABA Support Services LLC and the Exeter Township School District to provide additional behavioral support for student eight six nine two three two four for up to 25 hours at a rate of $128.75 per hour for the 23-24 school year. Is that like 25 hours for the year? That's my understanding?
Yep, 25 hours total.
And what do they provide that can't be provided by somebody else? Like, sorry, I looked up ABA and I was just wondering what the...
So, oftentimes when we have students with complex needs and we need a second opinion on what we need to be doing for programming, we will often reach out to agencies like this to help us with that second opinion and program.
Gotcha. Thank you. Okay, so that is the end of my committee. Excuse me, C and D, excuse me, A, C and D will be moved to the voting meeting.
Thank you, Dr. Battler. Next personnel, Mrs. Schaefer.
Thank you, Dr. Herron. We have five subjects up for discussion tonight under resignations. We have support staff items one through four and certificated staff item one.
I see that we have three paraprofessionals that are resigning. Is this going to be an issue with us replacing them? Are we going to have to go to an agency? Wondering where our thoughts are.
I'll let Diane answer that question.
I'm happy to, Diane. If you want to fill in the blanks, if you have any... We've been using an agency for over a year now. You guys approved a contract with GHR. And under the guise of, at one point, that was one of the more difficult positions for us to fill. Luckily, we have recently gotten some candidates for paraprofessionals, mostly due to the hard work of Jen Breton and Diane Skornavaki's office really soliciting and putting information out there to try to get us quality candidates. So, it's still a mix of, we're still finding some candidates that way. But ultimately, if we don't find a qualified candidate, then we'll go to GHR to find someone for us.
So, they have enough that they can support us in the interim where it won't affect services?
They have been, I'm going to knock on wood when I say this, they've been great about filling the positions that we need to have filled. So, it's super important because some of our students have very specific needs outlined in their IUPs that they require sometimes one-on-one aid support as part of that programming. So, we've been really fortunate with GHR.
And actually, last night, we had a job fair here at the administration building. We had quite a few people come in. So, we have some applicants that we're going to be screening today. Well, we did today and tomorrow for interviews. So, we should have some people on the voting agenda next week.
Under appointments, we have certificated staff item A, support staff item one, I'm sorry, item one in both, extracurriculars, certificated substitutes, guest teachers, and extended daily substitutes. Any discussion? Under transfers, under support staff, we have items one through five. Any discussion? Under leave of absence, we have two items up for discussion. And course requests are attached. Any discussion? It's recommended that A, B, C, D, E be moved to the voting meeting. Dr. Herron, and that is all for personnel.
Thank you, Mrs. Schaefer. Policy Committee, Dr. Hamburger.
It's going too fast, I'm going to have like an hour before it's... All right. So, we have one, one policy that's recommended for revision on the agenda that will require some explanations coming. And then the following second reading policies are ones that have been subject to discussion already, operated second reading, fourth reading. So, why don't we start out with the first policy.
Thank you, Dr. Hamburger. I hope you don't mind if I read to you tonight. I'm feeling a little under weather, so I want to make sure that I explain it correctly to you. So, reading instead of talking to you. So, first, the title of policy 220 was changed from student expression and distribution and posting of materials to just student expression and dissemination of materials because dissemination now covers distribution and posting. And you'll see throughout the policy that terminology has been changed and the section headings have been changed as well. The policy was also revised to more clearly outline instances of student expression that would be subject to the limitations, prohibitions, and requirements of the policy. Such instances would include off-campus student expression, which incites violence, advocates use of force, or otherwise threatens serious harm directed at student staff or the school environment, would materially and substantially disrupt or interfere with the educational process, or would interfere with or advocates interference with the rights of any individual or the safe and orderly operation of the school's end programs. New language was also incorporated into the policy regarding the training of staff involved. Yes, so that's another thing that we have to keep track of to train staff on every year. That means administrative staff and teaching staff. But I think that's a good one. That needs a refresher every year because we do have a really clearly outlined policy here that addresses First Amendment rights and the ability for students to be able to disseminate information. So, we need to make sure that we're following our policy accordingly and understanding the limitations that are on the district in terms of what we can prohibit from being disseminated and what we should allow to be disseminated. So, you'll see in the policy that requirement for training of staff now as well. And then also, we've updated the attachments to this policy. Like some of the others that we've talked about, you'll see those attachments as public-facing ones because they include forms and process so that everyone is aware of what the process is that needs to be followed for being able to disseminate information.
Mrs. Harris, the attachment, is that part of the policy? Or are you kind of looking at that as an administrative regulation?
As an AR.
Because I don't want the board to think that they're voting on that as well then.
Thank you, yes, you're not voting on the attachment piece, you're voting on the actual policy. Thank you, Dr. Herron.
Is there any discussion about policy 220?
Question. This question may be the apple to the policy's orange. But I seem to remember a case that might have gone all the way to the Supreme Court in Schuylkill County. I see, Mrs. Montane nodding her head. It was a student who, I don't believe, I don't think she made the cheerleading squad or something. Other than that, the memory is foggy.
Yes, I can't think of the name off the top of my head. But yes, it was a cheerleader. It actually is unrelated to this policy. This is about students disseminating information through school. That was done outside of school.
Right. But wasn't she dismissed or expelled and went to the Supreme Court?
She, the student posted on some social media some somewhat vulgar or inappropriate comments about some of the cheerleading squad and the school, but did it on her own device, on her own time outside of school hours. She had signed a contract, you know, as many do for extracurriculars, that says, you know, you'll be nice and you're a representative of the school, et cetera, et cetera. You won't post stuff like that. And she did. So, they kicked her off the cheerleading squad. She was not otherwise disciplined, like expelled or suspended from school. But the issue went up to the Supreme Court as to whether the school district, in kicking her off the cheerleading squad for violating her contract that she had signed, whether that was impermissible, overstepping by the school district and violating her free speech rights. And the determination by the Supreme Court was that, yes, that had violated her free speech rights. But that's separate from this policy.
So, I had 60% of it. Well, I think, I guess my question then is apples to apples. Are we, have we reviewed this to make sure that our students' First Amendment rights will not be infringed upon?
Yep, that's actually a part of the revision that PSBA made to this was to make it more clear to districts what you can and cannot allow on campus. So, for example, I'll give you an example of something that's allowable. A student decides he wants to start a garage band. And it's not affiliated with school in any way, but he wants to pass out flyers to advertise for, you know, members to the garage band. That doesn't violate anything in here. So, as long as he follows the process for submitting that flyer for prior approval, that's one that would be approved because it follows all of the guidance that's in this policy. An example that would not be approved would be if a student, let's say, wants to start a club off-campus that is somehow supporting hate speech and encouraging violence on, you know, somewhere on campus and they wanted to disseminate that flyer here on campus. That's one that wouldn't be allowed.
And how about if a student wanted to, I'm going to use a name that only old people like me will remember, wants to support Gus Hall for president? Gus was the perennial candidate from the Communist Party. But if a student wanted to start a sort of a political action committee supporting this candidate or that candidate, would that be allowed under this policy?
Yes, it would.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I think I just, one more distinction I want to make. A student can be disciplined for communications that come from outside of the districts if they're using district technology, website, email, you know, district resources, equipment like our computers. So, when they do that, that falls under the category and provides, this category provides some additional restrictions in terms of what they can actually do when they're using district property.
Would that information be on whatever form they would have to fill out so that they know in advance that that behavior is not permitted?
My understanding would be that'd be a pretty critical part of it because kids spend a lot of time on their computers at home and they do have district-issue technology, equipment. So, that's something students really need to be aware of. And there are, and I have a feeling this is one that it probably requires us to kind of include this in the student handbook for students to make sure that they are familiar with this before each school year. You know, we have a whole list, actually, of those that parents are supposed to read and students are supposed to get, you know...
So, they get that list when they're issued, the computer saying, you can't do this kind of activity?
It could be that, or it could be, I mean, I think there's just, you know, there are a number of things that students are supposed to review in their handbooks annually. You know, these books are issued each year. And we're getting better about including some of these policy references in the handbooks.
Yeah, I was just going to say, you have an acceptable use policy for all district technology that students use. And that is, I believe, in the handbook that they have to sign off, that they've reviewed, and their parents.
Got it. Thank you very much.
There's no further discussion. Dr. Herron, we'd like to move that first reading policy along in addition to the second reading policies that we reviewed previously.
Thank you, Dr. Hamburger. All right, Finance Facilities Audit Committee, Mr. Mell.
All right, here we go. Buckle up. Item A. Item A is for the 2023 ACA Employer Reporting Proposal for Conrad Segal. The administration could just confirm it. From what I could see, this is the same company we've used for a number of years, every year for ACA reporting. This is just kind of a routine renewal.
Continuation renewal.
Any discussion on this item? Okay, moving on to item B. This is to discuss the Pennsylvania Department of Ed Act One Index for 2024-25.
Okay, the Pennsylvania Index is basically set by the state each year on what the maximum school districts raise taxes. They give you an adjusted amount without having a referendum to go to the taxpayers. This year's base index is 5.3, our adjusted index is 7.1. Every year I've been here, the board has adopted an opt-out resolution saying they will not go above that adjusted index. Right now, you have to January 4th to pass that. But if they change the primary to March, which they may, you have to the end of November to pass that because the opt-out resolution is based on so many days before the primary. And we're trying to get the state to make a change to that because if you do an opt-out, you're supposed to have a plan or a budget to give to the state showing that you're going to stay underneath that. So, it's almost pushing up our budgeting cycle by two or three months.
What if the state hasn't finished their budget from the prior year?
There's no penalty for them, only for school districts.
Oh, okay.
Yes. So, I'm still, I'm going to recommend, because we talked last year, you know, the state with an opt-out resolution. I'll prepare one for November, just in case, you know, we have to have it done by November 30th. I also gave, did I give you the list of all the districts and what they are in Burks County? Yep, so you also have that, and that'll be on the website. And I will send out the Act One timeline. The one the state sent basically doesn't give any account of change in the primary. PASO just came out with one with the three scenarios of the primaries moved in the middle of March or the first week of April when the resolutions would be due. So, I will send that out.
Any other discussion? And moving on to last item, item C. Administration Quandell will provide an update to the board on capital projects.
So, thank you, Mr. Mell. I just want to thank Quandell representatives for being here this evening. They will actually be doing the presentation tonight. We've asked them to focus on looking at all the projects that were presented last week at the Capital Projects Meeting and offer items that will be eliminated from the plan. The board can certainly, you know, want that changed. I know there was a lot of discussions about what should say, what should be eliminated, what items should be deferred, and the reduction of the scope of certain projects. Just to reemphasize, the projects that are being recommended for, to be deferred are projects that still need to get done. We can kick the can down the road a little bit, but there will be economic implications for that as far as potential cost savings for the district by making sure that there's new equipment that is, offers energy-saving measures, especially when it comes to the bathrooms and water usage. That was one that we actually opted to eliminate. But the water prices have increased and we are feeling them here in the district. We're not immune to that. And there's also the potential that by deferring some of these projects that they will be more costly to fix or replace at that point because there won't be an option to fix them, you'll just have to replace them. So, all of those things will be shared with you tonight. But we just wanted to just restate that the deferred projects will need to get done. When we did the budget last year, there was money built into a maintenance cycle. And so, we could certainly say, like, oh, well, we'll build them into a maintenance cycle. But that maintenance cycle has already been spoken for because when we initially presented all of these projects and went through this with the board and the community, we shared, we divided up projects that would be 15-plus year, which were put into the category of capital projects, and those that were 14 years or less that will go into the maintenance cycle, like replacement of playgrounds. If we have to kick something like masonry repairs into the maintenance cycle, that's going to push down the road, the replacement of playground equipment, which again, could have a safety implication for students. We would simply have to remove playground equipment and it wouldn't be replaced. So, I think it's just really important to give you a very clear view of what we are, what we're trying to manage. John and Sherry will also give the board an idea of what needs to be prioritized, what projects they're going to recommend that we do immediately. There is a lot of concern about the high school in general, but specifically the heating and cooling system that's there because, again, lack of regular maintenance has a significant impact on the functionality of a system like that. And when we did the building tour, you got to see, like, what that looked like. So, by not doing regular maintenance, we're beyond really the repair piece of this. We're at a complete and total overhaul, which is not something that was identified by KCBA back in 2017 when they did that report because that was another six years of delayed maintenance that has now taken place. And that's, they couldn't have known that when they were just doing the just preliminary assessment of the KCBA report. But when they brought in their engineer team and they saw the significant damage that, and just the fact that those units, because it's multiple units, aren't functioning, that's what's really now driven up the cost. So, because of that cost, that's really changed the scope of some of the other projects that, again, will eventually need to get done. And there'll just have to be a very serious conversation about how that happens. Because we can't continue to sacrifice regular maintenance to do other things that weren't done. So, we're just robbing Peter to pay Paul. It's a vicious cycle. So, at this point, I'm going to turn over...
Dr. Hallow, before we get started.
Sure.
So, robbing Peter to pay Paul is a good way to put it. Is it also, isn't it also true that we're already paying for the sins of our forbears? Because that maintenance wasn't done. I think, I remember one example was some sort of chemical or gas that had to be run through piping that simply wasn't done.
Yeah, I've learned a lot about...
Yes.
I'm going to use all this knowledge, you know, when I need to replace stuff in my house. Like, John is going to be my new best friend. But, you know, as I said, you know, it's true. There was a lot of maintenance that hasn't been done. And it's not just in Exeter. It is a strategy that's oftentimes used by school districts to manage costs. You know, when they're looking at very large budgets and they're looking to cut out things, they will often skip out on regular maintenance. And that's why you have, you know, playgrounds that are beyond its shelf life. You have units of, you know, heating and air conditioning that haven't been maintained properly because you think you're going to get back to it the next year. But the damage, the damage is done. And so, you know, it's no one's fault. You know, this is, it's, there are a lot of decisions that need to be made in an 80-plus million-dollar budget. And while we're not as large as some other districts, we do have six buildings that need to be maintained. Our high school's a very large facility. We have Loush that was, had a lot of work that needed to be done. And I think the board, I think that the bus garage situation that we wound up being in, that was no one's fault, is the best testament to what happens when... is the best testament to what happens when you don't fix things or you don't maintain things and you let it go. And then you have to build an entirely new facility and that's, that decision is prolonged. And what could have been a one, two-million-dollar project became, you know, a five-million-dollar project.
So to my point, we're already paying for those decisions that were made previously.
So, and again, you know, it's, it's, you represent the community. You don't want to raise taxes. You want things to, to, to be stable for people. But we also have a responsibility to maintain a safe environment for students.
Right. And we also don't want students tripping down steps because the floor tiles and pads are inadequate. We also don't want students falling off of playground equipment because bar breaks or something.
Right. So this is, this is an opportunity that I think that, a unique opportunity that this administration has with the board to really go through and, and look closely at what needs to be done. And with the assistance of John and his team kind of leading the way because they know the ins and outs. But as I, you know, I've said before, in this situation, it's hard for someone to prioritize when everything's become a priority. But, you know, we don't, we don't have an endless cash flow here. So how, how do we manage that and, and what do we, what do we tackle first? And then what's the game plan for moving forward? Because it's, we really need to have a really thoughtful conversation about long-term planning in this, in this district to maintain what you're going to now fix or have to replace. So we have to really be thoughtful about that.
I agree. Thank you.
So John, if. I, yeah, I have just, well, like, you can start getting ready. I just have a question for Brian. I think that we put $500,000 into the maintenance schedule. Is that correct?
Yes, a year for the next five years for two and a half million dollars of projects that are under 15 years.
Okay, that was my question. It was how many years have we kind of filled up? So you just said five years.
Five years. And, you know, we're, there's a lot of things on there, but that has to be fixed. You know, the sprinkler system has to be brought up to date. Those heads in are bad. You know, our fire alarm system, the panels are out of date. We're constantly having false alarms, things like that. So those things have to be maintained and fixed and redone. The PA system at Watten is terrible. It's falling apart. We have to fix that. And that's, that's not an old school either. It's just old technology.
I just, yeah, I just wanted to get an idea of how many years worth we've already used that up for.
Yeah, we started this year.
Okay, so four more years.
Four more years. I'm just trying to find out what's going to fail before, you know, I don't want to spend it all right now and then not have anything at the end of the year. So we're figuring it out. But, yeah, there's money set aside for things that are less than 50% of your time. And also trucks. There's in there too.
I have a couple of questions before we get started. If we, if we decided to do everything, like every single thing on this list, what is the timeframe from the first time we can start the project to the time the last project ends?
Truthfully, because we're so far in this year, I'd say if we pushed everything, two years.
Reasonably, we can get everything done in two years.
Yeah. I have a feeling, I'd say pushing it, I would prefer saying over a three-year period. Because there's, I would not see shutting both auditoriums down at the same time. Just like the gymnasiums, we would not shut both gymnasiums down at the same time. Have that one or the other, you know, so.
John, just a couple of quick questions before you get started. When you talk about eliminated and deferred during this presentation, can you also discuss what the timeframe is before that eliminated or deferred becomes a priority? Because I think that's something we need to understand. You know, is that six months? Is that one year? Is that 10 years? So we can understand that. And then my second question is maybe before you get started, you can just explain how you got to these numbers. So is it a single bid? Is it three bids? And then how long are these numbers that we see valid for before we have to redo this and realize that either those numbers may go down, stay the same, or go up?
So as we get to these various topics, if I'm not answering those questions, please bring them back up and I will do my best to answer them. So, okay, so your first, the question about bidding, I'll just cover that now. So we went out to the bidding invited bidding community. We, for some things, we had single bids. For some things, we had multiple bids. And some of that bidding process is still ongoing. This was a large amount of work for some contractors we're talking to. So we're still getting some information in. And in fact, to that point, you'll see that our total project cost has gone down. And some of that is because we've gotten some either better numbers or as we've been talking to contractors, we've got a better understanding of what their thinking was and have made adjustments to that. So as we get lower numbers, that gets pushed right into the project so that we can, you know, just present best value. So we did not have 100% coverage on all of our bid packages. So for example, drywall, which is not a large piece of the project, we did not have drywall or on-site. But I, we're ongoing. I think today, actually, we had somebody walking the project. So that's an ongoing process and that will continue. And we will, as we have best information and best numbers, we'll continue to revise presumably down the numbers that we have here.
And how long are those numbers valid for?
Not that long. At this point, I'm pretty comfortable that the contractors we're working with will be good through to the end of the year. Typically, January 1 or shortly thereafter, there are price increases. So most people just have a standard 30-day, my number's valid for 30 days. If I call them up and I say, all right, it's 32 days or 60 days or 80 days, do you want the project? Oh, yeah. As long as there hasn't been a material price increase during that time, they will generally honor the number. So today, I'm not worried that we have numbers from three or four weeks ago on through today about holding the number for, you know, definitely through October would not be an issue. And for us, we won't be writing contracts for some of these if the project's approved this month, whatever that project is. For, you know, towards the end of the year, we would be finalizing scopes and getting all that detail done for our subcontractors.
So it's safe to say then for, if we did all these projects, presuming that some of these projects wouldn't start until 2025 and we aren't in 2024 yet, some of those projects could see significant changes to those prices. I'm not saying whether they're up or down. They could see changes.
So I'll comment about the downside. If we have a significant economic interruption, for example, war or some other thing that goes on, or a pandemic or something like that, we have examples or financial meltdown. We have examples in the recent past where prices have dropped significantly. Short of those kind of things, how's your crystal ball? Mine's kind of dark, so I don't know. But short of something like that happening, we see a lot of pressure on construction, among other things. The amount of federal incentives that are available to do work is keeping the contractor community nationally fairly busy and definitely locally.
And what is the threshold where if we approve these projects, what is the percentage threshold that if they go above what we're seeing today, the district would have to come back to the board and say, hey, this is, this is 12% higher than what we originally thought 18 months ago. We need to rediscover this.
So just to give an example, in this district, we just completed the junior high school project. A year ago in August, we had that project ready for board approval. At that time, the escalation of cost was more rapid than it is today. And so we checked about every two months with our contractors. At a certain point, things did level off, but there was an appreciation from a year ago, August to March, when the project was approved. So what was approved in March was at a higher number than what was potentially approvable in August. I don't think we are in a, the escalation rate I would use for equipment is somewhere between 10%, 12%, 15% per year right now. So it would not surprise me that in January, we would see that kind of price increase. A lot of the vendors that I talked to are anticipating something like that, in that range. Labor, I think, is, labor is tight in, in the construction world. I don't know that the labor rates are going up at that same percentage rate, but they are going up. So, I mean, I have a little foggy crystal ball for those kind of things. I would anticipate probably on average, a 10% to 12% per year escalation. And that's today, right now, my, my opinion of where things would end up.
John Doe, but correct me, if we sign the ESCO addendum, we're locked in. It's, ours can't go up.
Once, yeah, when a, when a, an agreement is signed, we don't come back and say, well, you know, there's no place in law you can confirm that allows us, even if the escalation rate was 50%, we cannot come back. We could ask, you could consider, but you are under no obligation to approve anything in that way.
But you're, but you're under an obligation to complete the project.
Absolutely.
Even if that project doesn't break ground for 18 months.
If you were not to allow us to break ground for 18 months, there is in the Guaranteed Energy Savings Agreement amendment that you would, the board would approve would have a schedule in that. If that schedule were to change, I'm not sure what our recourse would be. But we would want to perform per that schedule. So if you're, if you're saying we'd want to sign all this and say, have it done by September 2025, I would check our management and consider that and see what we would need to do to make sure we're covered. Put a transparent, if the, if the coverage, if, well, we have something. Some examples of this where if we don't, if we're not using those funds, they would come back to the school district. And we might be able to consider a structure like that to help index where things are.
That's helpful. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I'm Rob Strickler, the Vice President with Quantum Energy Solutions, and I'm not sure, John, necessarily answering your question. So if we go through this and the board decides to pull $5 million worth of projects out for now, and you go and you decide to do those in two years, we would come back and we would want to reprice those.
100%.
Because of what John was saying.
That's understood.
But if you decide you want to do $22 million of projects based on whatever scope that is, fits within that number, and we present you with a schedule and a budget, we would want to break ground within that timeframe. So I think going back to Brian's, the question was posed to Brian, it wouldn't make sense if you don't think you can get it all done in one year to write one contract. Decide what fits within your, do a contract for that, and then come back when you're ready to do the next piece. Do another amendment at that time. Does that answer your question better?
It does partially because, but, but what fits in our budget is this entire package that we're looking at. So when we're looking at a budget and we're looking at all these projects for $33 million, if we're being told it's going to take two years to complete all those projects and we can only get half of them done, I'm making up numbers in the first year, and then you're saying we have to do a new schedule for the second-year contract.
If you decide you want to do all of this work and that's what you want to write a contract for, that's what we will put into that contract. We will develop a schedule and a mobilization schedule around that.
But that could take two years.
It could. I don't, I, I think Brian was maybe a little cautious in that. I think we could probably achieve a better schedule than that. I think realistically, maybe 18 months, we could probably get everything done. Now, if we're, if the district decides you don't want to close down both auditoriums at the same time, you want to do one one summer, one the next, that's certainly something we can accommodate.
Yeah, I think, I think at least for me, that's something that I need to understand going into the decision because otherwise, we could be looking at a 10%, 15%, 20% increase if we have to do a second schedule.
Conceivably.
Down the road, even though we're all in agreement perhaps to do all these projects now.
Right.
So I think that's where there's a delta in how we're going to borrow the money and how we're going to budget that money. One of the things that I don't want to see is a 15% to 20% increase where then we have to come up with another half a million dollars because we couldn't get all the projects done within Schedule One. So just food for thought is the district and Quandell talks to each other.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
The pessimist in me is, is saying that hopefully the, well, not hopefully, but perhaps economic recession might take some of the pricing down as well if we do split it out and, and bring down some of the costs. But it's always a possibility, I guess. I, I did have one question, John, before you start about Johnson Controls. There, there's a number of projects here that's calling for replacement with Johnson Controls. And I'm just wondering, is Quandell is aware that just in the past week, that Johnson Controls International suffered a massive ransomware attack, which is still under investigation? The, and I'm just going to read an excerpt here from CPO Magazine that talks a little bit about it. And I, and kind of my ultimate question at the end here is, what other control systems can we look at if we determine Johnson Controls might be an issue for, for a number of reasons here? But basically, the article says, "The company said the incident is expected to continue to cause disruption to parts of the company's business operations, and they're still assessing whether the cyber attack will hinder the release of its fourth quarter and full fiscal year financials." "The cybercrime gang claims it compromised the company's network infrastructure, exfiltrated critical data, encrypted company files, and deleted backups." "The group is demanding a $51 million ransom for a decryptor and release of 27 terabytes of stolen data." "And the Department of Homeland Security is also investigating if the data breach compromised sensitive physical security information in addition to whether personally identifiable information was leaked." "Nick Tozek, lead security automation architect at Swim Lane, suggested that the ransomware attack could expose vulnerabilities downstream, potentially leading to supply chain attacks." In a quote, "If the exposed data includes source code that could be used to facilitate compromising Johnson Controls products, this breach could result in the discovery of new exploitable vulnerabilities in customers using network-connected Johnson Controls equipment." And again, that was from CPO Magazine, but if you would Google Johnson Controls ransomware, you would probably come up with a plethora of information out there. So that's something I do want to talk about if supply chain concerns as well as security concerns and some other things with that company.
Yeah, I'm not prepared to speak about that. I will have a conversation with our representative tomorrow and just see what the company position is or what's evolving.
They may not be able to get the quote that they originally gave you, potentially, if all their data is encrypted now, so I'm not sure.
Well, the, the, there are a number of different things. The controllers that they're installing here would not be part of any of that. They're not, you know, they're not, they're in a box. So, and all the system on, that's installed on the various schools is behind the school firewall. So that's, you know, from that standpoint, I don't know that they're.
But John, there, there's what, about five major players in controls?
Yeah, as far as, as far as. Yeah, there, there are any number.
It all comes down to what their proprietary and what you can do on it, right?
Yeah, there, if, if this is a wider discussion, we can certainly bring any number of controls, companies that are both national companies like a Johnson or more local operated that are, their sales channel, they have large national companies, but they're local representatives that, you know, design and install systems.
Is there a particular reason we went with Johnson Controls? Just because we have existing buildings with them? Is that essentially why we did that?
It's often, though not always, cost-effective to upgrade because the wiring, a lot of the, some of the end devices can be reused that don't have a lot of intelligence, you know, maybe an actuator or something like that, which is just turning things on and off. That, what controls that actuator would be upgraded. The wiring can be replaced or does not need to be replaced in a lot of cases if you're using similar architecture and. And, you know, Johnson Controls can be upgraded with Johnson Controls equipment in theory or cost effectively. Though I have worked in, with other controls companies that have been able to do the same thing, you know, cost competitively.
Thank you.
Okay, other questions? If not, I will head into the next slide. Oh, I have control. All right, let's see. Oop, okay, didn't work. Let's go back. I'll go back. All right. There we go. Okay, so this is a familiar slide. This was presented last week, and pretty much just what I wanted to do is, you know, how did we get here? There's some question about that. The, what was, what was presented last week and kind of recapped earlier. There, there's quite a bit of deferred maintenance in the district. And as we developed this project over the summer, more of that became clear to us. And the development scopes we put together for our subcontractors to consider included pretty, pretty much a comprehensive among the categories there, what we call ECM's Energy Conservation Measures. Some of those definitions may more loosely be under energy conservation, but some of them fall totally into that category of labeling. Last week, we did take these apart a little bit with some of the detail we have, and we're prepared to get into some of that discussion this evening, if that's the direction we want to head. I don't know if there are any questions about this chart that are left over from last week? And hearing none? So the next, the next slide will show a set of projects with, we are considering with, that we've talked to the school district about maybe putting in a deferred category, delete it from the scope, and an, an economic benefit that could be postponed if that's the desire. So for deferred, I think the key thing here is that deferred doesn't mean that it goes away. It's still something that needs to be done, but it's for whatever decision, we choose not to do that work right now. But it's something that should be considered fairly soon. And some things to the question of, is this something that needs to be done next year or three or five years? Sometimes that's going to be a fairly easy question to answer, and sometimes there's, you know, if I have a two-hundred-thousand-mile car, hasn't had any problems, got new tires on, the brakes were replaced, how's that, you know, should I replace it? Is it going to go another fifty thousand miles? There's some of those kind of questions, so that could lead you along the side of the road tomorrow or in five years from now. It's sometimes difficult to quantify that. But, you know, the statistics suggest it's sooner than later. Items that are deleted from the scope, might it be nice to have or help with certain improvements like student traffic in a cafeteria, something like this? But they can be removed from the project with minor consequence, but that consequence can be defined. Economic benefit is, for example, in this case, there are water closets, the flush toilets throughout the several schools that we were looking at replacing them. The cost of water in sewer is fairly high. So at this point, you're paying the utility on a monthly basis. If you put in lower flow fixtures, you'll be paying the utility less. So the question is, do you have the funds to invest now and then take the advantage of the savings to help pay for those, pay for that project? So in, in the case of the fixtures that we've identified, they're fine. They're maintainable, so there's, there's not a question that the bathroom needs to be shut down or anything like that. One touch. Okay, here we go. So this might be, in fact, it is a bit of a eye chart, and I apologize for that. I will be happy to read through some of the details. But I think the, the colors that we just talked about, items deferred, deleted from scope or economic benefit, we've color coded those. So the two that are in green are the fixtures in Jacksonwald and Lorraine. These are water closets, again, that we were planning on replacing. And in discussion with the plumbing maintenance staff, there's not an immediate need to do this. There is one other plumbing effort that we will be, that is, we're recommending stays in the project, which is in a junior high school. There's a pair of men's and women's toilets stacked three high that the carrier is starting to leak. There's some corrosion that's happening prematurely. So we're recommending that that would stay in. So it's not showing up on this project or on this sort of deferment list.
John, what is the percent water savings by going from a fixture, as you're suggesting, versus the fixtures that we have now?
So typically, these are one point six gallons per flush, and the ones that we're looking at are either point eight, point nine, or one. So it's somewhere fifty percent or sixty percent, forty to fifty percent savings.
And Brian, how do we quantify two-hundred-and-ten thousand dollars versus how much we'll spend on water in the next fifteen years? What we're talking about? Four thousand per school, per month? But you also have. And you also wash dishes in the cafeteria, you use sinks in the bathroom. So how do we quantify flushing toilets to a savings number?
So that's, that, we are not, we don't have those calculations today, but that will be in the guaranteed energy savings agreement. So we have standard industry for schools. These are the numbers of flushes per day, per week, per fixture, and.
It's ten dollars a flush here in Exeter.
Yeah. So we'll be able to flush out the details. I, I hope that's the last one of those. Other, other questions on this, I'll, I'll continue to sort of describe. So in the junior high school, there's under the auditorium cafeteria, an AV. The, there are some notes that people up close can read. But at the junior high school, the, the cafeteria would be deleted from the scope. And then that would be a new ceiling. There's an area that is used for storage that has a cage that we were going to remove the cage, put a wall up with some double doors. And those two elements would be removed from the project. Over to the maintenance garage in the plumbing item, there are two bathrooms in the lower level that are not public, and they are essentially abandoned at this point. And so our, the request was to make the, make that bathroom an ADA facility and available for trainers, coaches, not, again, it's not a public bathroom. So at this point, that one is colored red, if that's removed from the scope. Essentially, we're not changing the status of how the facilities are being used. There are restrooms available at the upper level in the stadium area. So that, we suggest that be pulled out if, if that's the desired direction. On the next line, over at the senior high school, this is a fairly substantial number listed here. It's almost two-point-nine million dollars. This would, this is, we're showing it red, and it could be the orange color. It's, we're happy to take some feedback on this. But this is the improvement to the high school. This would be except for the ADA work that would need to be done. And there's some code issues with the rigging system that would also be included. So those two, the wheelchair lift and the rigging work is still in the project, but everything else would be taken out to save that amount of money. So there would be no other upgrades to the auditorium in the high school. Moving down to masonry repairs, pretty much across the line. We have kept Jacksonwald in the project, therefore not on this, in this chart. That has the most need for repairs, and that should be done as soon as possible. The other ones, there are various needs. Some areas are, there, there's a lot of caulking that needs to be done on expansion joints around windows. There's some brick that is beginning to have freeze thaw issues, not extensively, but in specific areas. So again, those kind of, if we have a warm winter without a lot of freeze thaw cycles, the masonry would carry on a few more years. If, if we have a lot of freeze thaw cycles every, you know, during this winter and upcoming winters, then that would deteriorate the masonry that's already damaged further and more quickly. So these are probably, you know, one-to-five-year kind of decisions around the masonry and possibly longer, but then the repairs would be more extensive. So it's not just an escalation, but an increase in the amount of work that would need to be done. The next line, this is repurpose room at the junior high school. We have, let me just make sure I've got. Yeah, the, the entire wrestling room that was proposed is, has been pulled out from the project. So that's the value of the wrestling room improvement, or conversion from the wood shop to the wrestling room. That included the two ADA bathrooms and two small storage rooms that were part of that.
Is that being removed from scope, Brian, or are we going to do that internally? So we're not going to put the wrestling room upstairs anymore?
We, we, these are just recommendations. We had a, a long and tough conversation today, and we heard the board loud and clear about the concern over the numbers. And so when we started to look at the number and then the program, we made recommendations about things that needed to go. And while a wrestling room would be beneficial because we have a significantly, we have a very large, very successful wrestling program, we can't justify having that and then not doing other things. We also removed the auditorium, and we have an outstanding music program and that the kids use auditorium for. And the junior high auditorium will now be nicer than our high school auditorium, but that's a two-million-dollar price tag. So the wrestling, wrestling is a, is a, an activity that happens outside the school day. And what we discovered when we were doing the walkthroughs of the buildings is that our weight room, which is used every day for class at the high school, is in significant disrepair. And so we needed to make a decision about, do we do the weight room that's used for instruction and also used by our sports teams? Or do we use, keep in a weight room that is used as an, as an activity? I think wrestling's great. I think our wrestling team is amazing, and again, super successful. But those are the tough decisions that we need to look at. You can certainly add it back in, but if you want to keep the costs down, then something else will have to be removed, or you're, we're going to have to up what we're willing to spend because it's not a, a little bit of money.
Yeah, and I think it's important to add when you talk about adding things back in, the things that we would recommend adding back in first are the things that are in yellow because remember deferred does not mean they don't need to be done. It means they desperately need to be done, but we're just trying to figure out a way to present you with some options here.
And just like the, the water closets and the bathrooms with the flushes, there is an economic implication to the not doing the wrestling room too. You know, at this point, we are transporting students over here to use the LASH wrestling. But I will tell you that, well, we're going to have to reconsider that. We don't transport other sports that are using off-site to practice. We don't transport our swim team that uses Albright. We don't transport the golf team that uses the Reading Country Club. We don't transport our diving team that uses Governor Mifflin. All of those students who participate in those activities, they find their own rides to participate in them. And so if the transportation situation being as, as difficult as it is, that might be also the case for the students who are using LASH as a, as a practice base because there is a financial implication to the district to transport, and we don't do our other sports. That, that decision was made last year because it was a last-minute decision to allow them to use here because we're limited on space. So we did at the time, but to try and ease, you know, because we weren't using the junior high. But now we're going to have to rethink that.
Brian, how much is a one-point-two-seven-four-million-dollar tax increase in one year?
Yeah, I mean, I'm already thinking the same thing, Tim, that like, if that's going to cost us a hun- one-hundred-twenty thousand or two-hundred-forty thousand more in a year or two, that we should be putting the deferred costs right in right now.
Yeah, I don't disagree. And I think, so just, you know, just to be clear, district, from my aspect, I know that I was not here at the, at the last meeting. I apologize. I had a commitment with work. I don't have a problem with spending money if it's, if we're spending it the right way. I think my issue is to understand the breakdown and to understand the value of the products because I think that we were told initially that we went highest quality, highest cost. So I think understanding the breakdown, not to say that we need to eliminate projects that need to be done. I think there are things that can be eliminated, but if we're talking about deferred, my standpoint would be at eighty-five thousand dollars a year for fifteen years as opposed to one-point-three million dollars for one year on, on the backs of our general budget. I think that the, the money is better spent if we're taking the money out over fifteen years. It's my thought.
To answer your question, I, I would not recommend the tax increase. I'd just recommend extending your debt term instead of twelve years, go to fifteen years. I reckon probably thirty-four, thirty-five million. But if you do want to know what a one-point-two-million-dollar tax increase would generate, it's two-point-five percent.
Right. So I mean, that's my point, though, is.
Two-point-five percent increase in tax.
But if we're going to defer things, and eventually when they need to be done, they get dumped into our budget. So if we're going to talk about a two-point-five percent tax increase for one-point-three million dollars or adding it to a loan, which is over fifteen years, about eighty-five thousand dollars a year, that's a lot easier for, I think economically, for our taxpayers to swallow than to do it when we all of a sudden say this has to be done in one year.
And even with the auditorium, we asked them to remove that as an, as an option for the board because you could see, you know, the amount of money it would cost by removing that. But that will also have to be done. I mean, the seat, those seats that, that, that auditorium hasn't been touched since nineteen ninety-two. There's, the flooring does need to be replaced, but if you're going to replace the flooring, you really need to replace the seats. You can't, you know, you can't like replace the flooring and then add back the seats to then replace the seats on the flooring in like seven years when you probably have to replace the seats. So, you know, you're just kind of throwing good money after bad. And again, you know, we have an outstanding music program. We have, you know, they're running microphones at seven thousand dollars a, a play because we don't have adequate equipment to support that aspect of our, of our program and program, which is very important to students. But when you're looking at the dollars, that's not something that is going to close the school. Not having heat and air conditioning is going to close the school. So again, these are just conversation points just to give the board. So again, these are just conversation points, just to give the board a, a good look at what is, what we're kind of looking, what we've kind of been talking through. But this is your discussion and ultimately your decision as a board as to, do we want to remove? Do we want to defer? Do we want to just borrow the money and take the projects out? Because again, when we embarked on this, we did talk about the only thing that we can control is how much we pay back for the debt. That's the part of the budget that we can control. So if you do it now, it's done and then we just have to worry about the maintenance part. But if you defer it, it's gonna come back around and then it's gonna cost more. And that's kind of the ugly reality of this.
I would disagree a little bit and say that, again, the last meeting, we were told the highest cost, highest quality. And, and I know we're not done the presentation yet, so I don't want to jump the gun. But I mean, one of the things I'd like to know before we just automatically talk about scratches and stuff from it was, you know, if we didn't go for the Mercedes and we didn't go for the Pinto, if we went for the mid-grade option, if that saves us, I mean, I don't know what that saves us. Is that 5%? Is that 25%? Does that 25% equal $2 million? I think for me, part of the problem that I was sticker shocked was because we were looking at a KCBA study with numbers based from 2017. My fault. I was kind of more under the presumption that it was updated to like kind and quality. So I think that's where our differential is in pricing, but I think we need to understand all our options, not just cut this out. We also need to say, if we do keep it in, how do we do it at a price that's cost effective?
And we talked through that too. So you have, you have all the options on the table. It's a, it's a menu tonight, so.
I mean, even today, we talked about, do we do away with the wrestling room or do we just do away with the bathrooms? That cuts it in half price, you know, price in half, but it was more important that we had a weight room that's used for instruction and curriculum compared to after school activity.
So my only concern with extending the debt longer is, do we, do we know what we don't know? Is there things that are going to need, big ticket items that are going to need to be updated before that 15 years? That is gonna bite us in year 10 or anything there? Facilities, major facility upgrades? That, that is, that's my concern. I know if we can say, let's just push the debt out. And I, I'd rather have that than a shorter term with higher expenses, annual debt service. But I, I am concerned about the length of time and what potential other capital improvements are gonna come our way.
Yeah, when we went through this, we all, you know, all of our roofs are good through, I think, 2032 or if not longer. All the, if the high school would have been the last HVAC project, so all the buildings HVACs are gonna be there. You know, if we can maintain the exterior of the buildings with the masonry, you know, the, the only thing I could see happening down the road and I would not capitalize parking lots and, and, you know, pavements because they, they crack every 10 or 15, 10 years. They're not a 15 year process. So, you know, I'm not sure what we're missing. You know, if we had a, knock on wood, an influx of students, we'd be at capacity, but that's, that's a different story, which you, you know, that, if that happened.
It could, I mean, it could be a reality where, where there's been conversations about.
But even building a new school or expanding is a four-year project. It doesn't happen overnight because you have to go through the state, the process, you know, so.
So if we get apartment buildings and townhouses, influx or whatever could potentially happen over at the promenade, we see a, a rather large increase in residential housing in the township that would require a new building or retrofitting an existing building or anything like that. Let's say that would happen in five years, what, you know, what ramifications would we be looking at?
Doing what Milneburg's doing right now, they're putting in temporary classrooms and they're starting to design buildings, which they probably won't be able to build for another five years. But that's.
Building a building is a very lengthy process and I hope that that doesn't happen. But you're right, you know, like John said, no one has a crystal ball. And while we think that, uh, once we get through these projects with the, our heating and cooling systems and our roofs are, are good, you know, what more is there? But we do have six buildings. We do have this building. We do have a bus garage to maintain. Unfortunately, it's like owning a home. There's, there's always something. There's always a water heater. There's always, there's always a replacement of something. Because it's used and it's used hard. So, you know, we just, we just don't know, but this is the best look that we can give the board and the community today.
So just a few more items on here. In, under the high school, we have a color that's not like the others with three asterisks there. So that was the addition of the weight room in the high school. And we, we reflect that in, I'll, if it's not in materials that you have, I'll cover that cost in a short time forward here. The last three items at the bottom, there is a door that I referenced earlier in Lorraine for the cafeteria that is shown as being removed. And in Awatton, there's some discussion at the last meeting. We had looked at removing all the movable partitions, all that are corridor partitions, I should qualify that. So the art room would stay in and a couple of the interior room partitions would stay in. But the corridor partitioning would be removed and then drywall would be put in. There is one, uh, uh, partition that is off the track, damaged in some way. So that, I left that in. I don't know exactly what that value is, but I left 15% of that total number in to account for design and any other things that we might need to do there. That number may be, maybe it's 12%, maybe it's 11%, but I left 15 in just to be conservative for the moment. But, so that means 85% of the cost that was listed is there. So we can do something with the one classroom that has the door or the damaged partition. And then at Reiften, there are emergency access roads, which have some erosion damage. We're saying defer those. That's the 94, no, almost $95,000 there. So I think that covers everything in this chart. We wanted to start there. At the bottom, the savings, if all these are included, is about 5.3 million. Our current project cost is about 32.6, which is less than the 33.5 from last, last meeting. And if these were incorporated, the project would end up being around 27.3.
Can we have a meeting every week if it's gonna drop a million dollars each week? We'll be ready to vote in like eight weeks?
We're, we're trying, we're, we're hopeful. Yes, there's, I don't want to set a trend or expectation. And we won't have exponential drops or logarithmic or anything there. But we're hopeful that we can continue to provide best value until a voting. All right, I'll go on to the next slide. So this is another great eye chart for those in the back. I'll just give you sort of a general survey of what this is. At the, the, there's a blue line at the top and a blue line sort of below it with a bunch of numbers in the middle. Essentially, tho- those are contractor costs for the most part that, that we have. And those contractor costs are then reflected in other backup materials that we have. Essentially that, those map to, from those contractor costs map into this chart. And then math happens to be able to add everything up to get a cost per ECM, a cost per school, and ultimately a bottom line cost that, that would be a suggested contract. So all the things that we talked about taking out are not out. They're all in here. This is a full complete project. And there's one color that's not like the others. That is the weight room. So that was added in this afternoon. So that, that's at the high school. So that, that is now part of the project going forward unless directed otherwise. I can answer any questions about any lines that are here. One thing that's different about a, a, an ESCO project, a performance contracting project, there are two lines that are sort of, you might see a green color there. One is commissioning and one is measurement and verification. Those are very important for the energy guarantee and to make sure on the commissioning side that what we install is working properly. If it's not working properly, it's hard for us to guarantee the energy savings. So we have a commitment to making sure that what's turned over to the school ultimately is working as designed and as intended. And then the measurement and verification process is to essentially track the energy use and make sure that the savings that we're suggesting you're getting are in fact happening. And that's at a meter base. So we've got all the meter data now. We'll compare it to later on and we expect a certain savings to be ongoing. And if we're not hitting those, then that's part of the guarantee is that we cover the difference.
So John, I do, I'm being very stubborn with the controls at Awatton. So that building, it was built in 2011. The building's 12 years old. Kind of when we brought this up at the last meeting, we, you know, used the analogy of the Nokia, the technology of the cell phone, as you recall. I'm just, I, I'm really having trouble understanding why a 12-year-old building needs new controls already. And maybe somebody can explain that or is this, is this prioritized to be the last of all the projects? So it hits that 15-year mark? What, what is the, you know, what, what is the benefit here by doing?
So, so I don't know what the Windows version from that long ago is, but maybe it's seven? Maybe it's whatever came shortly after that? So just from that level, that would be, and I don't know that that's what is the operating system for that, for the Siemens control there. But the, there has not been a maintenance contract on that building. I do not believe the maintenance staff has solid access to be able to change schedules, change thermostat settings and that sort of thing. Of that access is no longer available. So that alone may not be a reason to, you know, change out the system. But the fact that it's 12 years old, that is a very old control system.
I, I, could I invite Mr. Biggerstaff up to the podium here? Cause I think he might have some, something to say from the district side. Thank you. Yeah, I saw you, we saw you flailing back there. I wasn't sure if you needed a Heimlich or if I should invite you up to the podium.
The rest of our buildings, all, all six, well, bus garage does not have a control system. It's a, a computerized system. What we use from Johnson Controls is Medisys. And Medisys is how we do the controls in the building, adjusting temperatures, looking at humidity, looking at everything and being able to control fans on, off, time delays. Awatton was never put through the Johnson system. It was on a Siemens Neutron system when it was purchased. And the problem is, is Siemens really doesn't, they're, it's not that they aren't in that business anymore, but they're not the same technology as what you would have with Johnson Control. You can't, you, you can if you're all Siemens at all your buildings. I'm sure you can use a control system that would work, but what is there is correct. Which what John is saying is it's a, it's an old Windows system. It's not easily adjustable and we don't, we can't talk to it like you can with the other buildings to really find out what's going on.
How, how often do we have to make adjustments?
Well, the biggest problem we're having right now with the building itself is, since it doesn't have control systems, there are a lot of things like the PA system, the smoke detectors, the fire system, the solar system for the emergency generator. We can't really access them on a overall position. We can only adjust them at certain levels that is way below our capability because Siemens has designed it that way. So it's an overall system problem and it also affects the water pressure in the building, everything. So we're really limited control on what we can do at all. So the only way to bring it back online and put it into a way we can control it is to convert it over to a Johnson, or Johnson system, which would just make sense because it'll cost us millions of dollars to opt out and go to another control system.
Even, even if we signed with a Siemens support contract, it would, it would still be more expensive?
So Siemens will not give you access to do that. They have to make all changes in the building.
Right.
So it would not be available to us at our level. And I'm not saying it's a game, but what, what happens is anytime there's something that's out of the realm of a, a basic control, we have to call on a Siemens tech, which is expensive. So we try to limit that to where we get to a point where we can't handle it amongst ourselves. Then we'll contact them and then it can be seven to 14 days till you see someone come out. So it's pretty brutal.
Okay.
So are you saying that once we would get and have a new contract, change the provider basically, we wouldn't have to then in 11 years, get a whole new system again?
No, I mean, you, you shouldn't have to. I just don't know how deep into the woods we're gonna have to go in order to switch a system over. Cause you're basically talking that every room has its own controller, which is hooked to another centralized controller, which then hooked to the main control for the system. So it's, it's in depth. It's, it's gonna be expensive no matter what you did. I did have Johnson come out here about a year ago and look at it and they gave me a price close to a million just to do that work on one building. So I'm not sure if we can do something else, like if there's, I'm not an engineer from that aspect. There may be cheaper options, which I'm sure Quandell can point out to us as a whole. But to change the building control system over to Johnson Controls will not be cheap. And I'm not sure there's any easy way around it. It's kind of like a hurdle we're gonna have to go through.
Yeah, so if the, it's, we, we update the controls now, but maybe this is kind of what Allison was alluding to. But then in 10 more years, like we need new units, new HVAC units in there. I, I guess I'm kind of looking at is, wouldn't it make more sense to do all of the controls and everything at that point versus doing the controls now and then trying to retrofit some type of new HVAC system in with those controls?
The good thing about Awatton, which is a lot different than Reiften, is when that was built, it uses the systems, the, the systems are not all in the classrooms. They're located up above. I think you and I walked that long corridor where all the units are placed when we did the walkthrough for the budget meeting this past year. It's a lot cheaper cost and you can find parts for those units a little bit more readily than you can for what we have at Reiften. So I don't know that the cost down the road, I mean, it's, it's really, you're talking software and hardware. So the hardware portion you can, you know, replace by just replacing those units. The software portion is where you get into problems and that's the problem we have at Awatton. You're dealing with the control system, which I would concern, software and then versus the hardware, which is the actual units themselves.
Right.
So I don't see that as much of a problem and I think, being that we are maintaining them and, and I, I give my guys credit. You know, when I'm in these buildings, I'm checking to see if they're changing the filters, if the belts are making noise, what's going on? They are doing the services that need to be done on the units. At that, you should be able to get 25 to 30 years out of the unit. So I don't see it as a, as something that's as much of a concern as in what you're looking at at the junior high or the senior high because, you know, they're older buildings with older systems.
So basically, we put in an older system into a brand new building? Or a system we can't maintain into a, a brand new building?
I'm so, can you repeat that? I'm sorry.
I think it was up to date at the time in 2011, but now it's antiquated.
I can add to that.
Go ahead.
Siemens, I call them proprietary systems. You can't go in and make changes. You have to go through the representatives. Where Johnson Control, our guys can actually pull it up on their cell phone and make the change to the temperature of the room or, or turn fans on, turn fans off. Where Siemens, you have to actually go through their reps to make any type of changes, major changes.
So Johnson has a remote control and Siemens doesn't? That's basically how we're looking at it?
Just to go back to what Stephen, what Stephen said about the PA system, that that is tied into that too. And that PA system, I can speak for being the building principal there, does not function correctly. So that will have to be replaced, but if you replace it. So that will have to be replaced, but if you replace it, what are you replacing it with? Because it's tied to Siemens and then you're just kind of stuck now with another system tied to Siemens instead of Johnson controls and.
So the H V A C controller controls the P A system?
And the clocks, correct?
The clocks, the P A system, the water pressure, the building.
And none of it, and none of it functions properly, so.
Now, the good thing is the P A system and the clocks is in our maintenance budget over the next couple of years. Not not in the capital.
However, it needs to be replaced and so it would make sense to replace. I know it's all intertwined, it's terrible, you know, that, but if you're gonna replace it, you should replace it with a good system that's gonna function with the control system that you're gonna have to eventually replace anyway because this is not working well, nor has it, so.
Thank you. I mean, that definitely gives me a lot more detail than I did before. Appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Biggerstaff.
Thank you, Steve. So in terms of the, there are a number of questions about control systems and concerns about that. And I'll I'll uh dig into that a little bit more tomorrow in terms of the first statement about uh, you know, Johnson Controls. So I will, there was a question about what happens to control system, how do they age? And they are a technology and so um I waved my cellphone around last week. It's it's um, if you've driven a car that was, I mean, that's always a good analogy, but there's a lot of uh a a high-tech car, you know, advanced controls back from, say, twenty-ten or twenty-eleven. Today you have radar, a lot of, you know, lane change, a lot of technology is baked in that wasn't available ten years ago. The other thing that happens, there are software upgrades and you want those because of exactly the issue with uh internet, you know, attack and that sort of things. So there are patches that are issued, those have to be uh maintained, those haven't been. And the operating system of that age has not been upgraded regularly. That part in part can be a maintenance, not uh people on the ground changing filters, but a maintenance contract would include software upgrades and patches and things like that to make sure that the system, you know, maintain durability and um are current. So, you know, every once in a while my phone beeps and there's another upgrade. That downloads for free, I'm inconvenienced for five minutes. I'm not drumming, waiting for the upgrade to happen, but those those happen. Uh, some controls companies do that for free, similar to the phone upgrades. Um, other companies uh charge for that, so those are some different options as well in terms of keeping the systems current. So there's the hardware, there's the software, and then there's the equipment. Your question about a Watten, I think is a good one. Maybe in ten years or so, the heat pumps, just like what we're doing in Reiften, are proposing changing all the heat pumps out. That's something that would be coming in this ten-year time um to consider that that's two would happen. That could be in ten to fifteen years. The controls by that time um probably will have a similar discussion. Not we perhaps, but people in this position in ten to fifteen years will have that similar discussion of updating the controls as you update the equipment. So I just a few more things on this. We've we've broken out quite a bit of information in terms of, you know, where our costs um are shown. We have contractor costs and then we have project management costs and other uh costs that are there. And at the very bottom, the last few lines, there are architectural and engineering costs that are incorporated into the project. Should there be changes in the scope, you know, if some things are deferred or whatnot? Uh, the architectural scope of work might change. So for example, um, the, if the high school auditorium is taken out of the project, the architectural fees would go down. I do not have a breakout of those costs today.
So John, I do have a question for you. Um, looking back to last week, in a Watten, when we talked about the H V A C and control upgrade, that was um pricing complete at one point seven million dollars. And on another slide you have here, it's one point four million dollars now, roughly one point five. What is the difference? Like, why is it such such a differential in, in a positive, obviously, because the cost came down? But what changed that from one week to the next?
So uh you're looking at a Watten, the controls costs specifically?
Sorry, last week it was one point seven million and it's one point four eight now.
Yeah, yeah, so the numbers at the top, there's about a, if you um uh the next, so you have the top blue, the second blue line and below that second blue line to there's a whole column of numbers, but there's a new column of numbers that are percentages to the left. Those are various markups, for example, um construction contingencies, three percent. Uh, document repo, uh, you know, just down, all those add up to something around, I guess, five and a half, six percent. I didn't add them up, but it's somewhere um in that range, it might be even six and a half percent. But all those are line items that that are part of uh, you know, how we track projects and whatnot.
So that that's just material costs, that one point four?
Yeah, that's material costs and then um the other costs are added on to that to get a total project cost. So um last week we had all this, we didn't expose or share all this. Partly we weren't ready to do that, just last week was the hurricane of numbers coming together and here they are. Uh, this week, we are not under the same hurricane forces. Lots of numbers swirling around and getting into their right spots. So um at this point, we're we're essentially saying here, last week was, here's the top line. So it's gonna be this much. This week we're showing you, this is how the contractor numbers roll up. And here are the various other costs and fees that are part of the project to get us down to the lower right-hand corner where the total line of project is. So at this point, that number is uh almost three point, or sorry, thirty-two point six. I think last week was thirty-three point five.
It was thirty-eight million last week on.
Yeah, that included.
Well, that included the, yeah.
That included some of the capital recouping.
John, I don't wanna break up your presentation here and the board can let me know if they think different, but almost seventy percent of our spend comes from two auditoriums and a H V A C in the high school. I was wondering if maybe we could just cut to the chase and figure out how we're spending seventy percent of our money, so we understand it better.
Yeah, I would agree. I think it's time that the board talks about what we think is important for this project and what parts we should move forward with.
Okay, um, I won't spend much time on this, but one of the struggles we have when we were asked to say, how would you manage, say, a fifteen million dollar budget? I I a a terrible analogy is I have three kids and which one would I put forth for awards or other thing? You know, it's that kind of thing. Not that these projects are like my kids, but there are, the needs are there, uh, so who gets fed first? It's it's to, like I said, it's a pretty lousy analogy. I'm sorry for using that one. But the idea is um, there are many ways to come up with a roughly fifteen million dollar project. This is but one and it leaves a lot of things on the table. But it includes the senior high school. We'll skip over the question slides and tell me which numbers you wanna look at first?
I'd like to see the two auditoriums and the senior high HVAC. I don't know if anybody else disagrees, but that's the big tickets, right?
Well, the auditoriums right now are, were red, were deleted, I mean, but.
But that doesn't mean they're off the table, right?
No, it doesn't.
Because, right, because on, based on the sheet that he showed us of the thirty-two million, twenty-five of it, almost twenty-five million of that is auditoriums and HVAC and senior high HVAC.
We only deleted the senior high auditorium, is that right? The junior high was still there.
In the original, but the total project includes it.
Correct.
Yeah. I'd just like to see a breakdown of it because there, I do have a couple of questions, especially with your contingencies. I'm having a hard time understanding why the contingency is twice as much for the junior high as the senior high when the senior high ticket, I'm sorry, the senior high is, am I saying that right? It it it's twice as much with the same ticket, with the same cost. It's a hundred fifty thousand for the senior high, three hundred thousand for the junior high, and they're almost the same price.
Which part are you looking at?
The contingencies for junior high versus senior high auditorium.
Oh, yeah, so, okay, now I know.
See, you have three point, you have three point seven for the junior high and you have three point three for the senior high, but the contingency is twice as much for the junior high as it is for the senior high.
Yeah, so this is not a mathematical percentage? This was guidance from the uh vendor we're using for the auditorium A D technology. And they pretty much gave us a price range for last week. I used, not, you accurately described, I'm not sure Cadillac's right version, but they gave me a high end, that's what I used. This week I've come back with the low end and broken out the difference between low and high. The differences for each category, say, the sound system, might have been a wider range for the one building than the other. I don't have those in front of me. But for example, the sound system at the high school or the here, the um was somewhere, you know, around a hundred and forty, it says a hundred and thirty-eight. And the range may, you know, may have been uh another, you know, thirty or forty thousand, whereas at the high school, it's only a twenty thousand dollar spread between low to high. So those are numbers that um, as we broke them out, the guidance from last week's meeting was um, we we hear that you have a high number. That's not really what we wanna see, that, so what I thought, we don't, we do not have a solid detailed scope of work yet. That is on the way from the um uh the A D equipment folks. When we get that, we will be going through a uh another stakeholders' meeting. We've gotten feedback from stakeholders of the two auditorium users, the main users for musical and chorus orchestra, even some uh outside groups that may use those spaces. We haven't talked to those outside groups, typically when they come in, what are their needs? So we're making sure that we, the s- the systems will cover all those different needs. So this, what I'm showing here is essentially the cost to the bottom line is not different. But what I've done is the um, it uh broken out the delta between high and low and that's three hundred thousand for the junior high school. And so if the school district says, well, we need thirty-two mics, but you only have twenty-five here, we have a place to say, okay, is thirty-two mics what you want? Yes, then there's a place to go to um buy the additional microphones if we, if, just to pick an example for the, for a sound system. That gives us some flexibility and it gives transparency to the school district for moving forward. If if you tell me, take that three hundred thousand out and that's our budget, we'll work with the school district to make sure that the systems um meet that budget. And maybe it'll be higher on the sound system and lower on some other, you know, there's different ways of meeting different needs of different stakeholders.
So when we speak to these departments using this, are we under the impression that they're giving us the yes, absolutely, this would be the absolute greatest thing for us to have on this stage? Or are they saying, we can settle for this?
I.
Because I'm sure that everybody wants Broadway.
Well, no, that wasn't the case, actually. Most most folks, uh, the discussions were not expansive. They weren't, say, uh, shooting for the stars. They're actually um, uh, the initial discussions were quite reserved. And um, I guess our approach is looking at this, a lot of this is an educational opportunity. So when students are using these systems, they can go out into the world if that's their interest and arrive at a location that has similar systems with similar technologies and not have a huge learning curve. So from a vocational standpoint, that's part of what the installation is about, is to be able to make sure students have an act, have an opportunity to use these systems. So we we were able to, I would say, at the junior high school, the uh person we met with there uh was a little more detailed about what they were interested. The person we met at the, at the high school, senior high school, was um a little more reserved and cautious and then said, well, this is a chance to upgrade the systems to meet your needs. What are those needs and really get into that conversation? So um, the folks we're working with understand the difference between Broadway, high school and junior high in terms of uh the types of musicals or the types of productions that might be uh in place and the systems will be uh set up accordingly. The other thing with the junior high, because there are two large group instruction rooms, we'll have partitions that close and reestablish those rooms as education spaces, which is not the case today. So those will be coming back into use through this project. When those partitions are closed, those rooms need to operate with audiovisual equipment as classrooms. When those partitions are open, they need to operate as an auditorium. So that's not hard to do, it's programming and software and having the right devices. It's a, the partition like a, uh, some sort of signal, the partition is closed, it's a classroom, the partition is open, it's an auditorium. So there's a few more complexities, but not not significantly count, it's, they're complexities because of the uses of the room. They're not complexities because the technology is new and uh hasn't been used yet. It's well, well-used, well-practiced to do these kind of things. So the, there are more moving parts in the junior high than in the 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 high school, senior high school. And so as a result, some of those uh price ranges reflect that kind of uh um difference in scope.
Um, Tim, I'm wondering if maybe we could go back to that, that's like one of the first slides that we had and, you know, decide, okay, we are gonna go with the yellow, we're including them back and then let's look at the red and are we going to in- include any of those back? This one, yep. So, I mean, I for one think that we should, if the things on the list for deferred are being said by the administration and they need to be done, um, they're willing to defer them, I think it's going to end us. Those are things that are gonna cost us more in the long run if we have to come back to them. I think we should add for sure the deferred items back um with the other items. So that's step one. Does anybody?
I agree with that.
Well, or or could we at least find out how much it will cost us to defer those items?
I think, well, I think he said, I think he said it like ten to ten percent, ten to fifteen percent on materials and ten percent, ten to twelve percent on labor each year.
Each year, okay. Yeah, and that's assuming the prices go up, but again, it's a crystal, it's a crystal ball. We we don't know.
Seems like it's always gone up though, Jason. I don't, I've been here a few years now and I've never had them like, good news, it's gone down.
Yeah, well, I mean, the, to knock on wood, we've been through a very long stretch of a prosperous economy. So that's, that's the one thing I think that has caused a lot of that inflationary cost that we've seen. I don't know, I I still see, I'm still seeing the the uh the drums meeting out there about economic recession hitting towards Q four or Q one of next year and, you know, I I I'm still in that camp where I I don't know if uh if we want to actually lock in costs on things that we don't necessarily look, need to lock in costs. But I I will agree that this stuff for deferred, if they're um, if we're talking one point two seven million and these things probably should get done at some point, then I I would be in agreement that we should probably just lock those in.
I think at the end of the day, the question is, let's just say you defer it and then we decide in two years that this needs to be done and it costs two point five percent to do that. The year after that, are we gonna take that two point five percent and give it back to the taxpayers? Or is the district gonna incorporate that one point two million dollars into their general budget in the next year and the year after that, year after that? If you take out a loan, that's a set amount of money, you're paying it off. I understand there may be other projects down the road, but it's not, i- i- if you raise taxes when, you know, two point five percent, you're taking one point two seven four million dollars on year one to do the projects. But then you're taking that same money out on year two and that same money out on year three forever, unless we give it back. So I don't understand how we wouldn't incorporate it into a loan because I think it'd cost the taxpayers more to increase taxes unless we intend on giving them the two and a half percent back after the first year.
You you're talking about the yellow?
You, you're talking about the yellow, the deferred, yeah.
I think, I think we agree on the yellow. Okay?
One, once more with feeling, what are we doing with the yellow? I think I agree with you, but just, just for this old guy.
What are we doing for what?
Yeah, just, just say it again.
Okay, what I'm, what we're agreeing on is that all of the projects that they are saying for sure, like, they're not even really listed up there. They're, you know, the, I guess, the original, um. Twenty-seven, the original twenty-seven million, twenty-seven million two ninety-three, is that correct? That's without the yellow?
Uh, that number is, if you take everything that's highlighted in any color and take it out, that value is five point three million. Subtract that from.
All right.
So, the original number is thirty-two six roughly.
Okay, so, but I think it would be anything, twenty-seven million two ninety-three is what they're saying, yes, this absolutely must be done. Then they're saying there is one point two seven four in deferred, but it also needs to be done, but they could defer it. But I'm saying, no, we should include the one point two seven four in with that twenty-seven million. So, we're at least at twenty-eight and a half million.
That's what I thought you said, thank you. That, that take, that eliminates the gotcha factor, right?
Right.
We don't do something, oh, yeah, we'll do it next year, and suddenly it explodes, and then we're spending five million dollars to, yep.
Okay, now, anything in red, that's.
Do we wanna go red for red? Is there anybody who wants to pull one of those reds out and say?
I would like to talk about the auditoriums, cause the, the part that I'm still having a hard time wrapping my head around is, is that, and correct me if I'm wrong. The high school auditorium is probably, of the two auditoriums, are highly, are, are most utilized space, is that correct? And, uh, and now, just for a second, take, take the fact that the floor and the seats in the junior high have to be done. We understand that, that needs to be done, so when you take that out of the project. My question is, what are you left with, and what is the imminent need? I understand the rigging needs to be done, but when you start to look at that entire A V package. Are we, for assemblies right now, is that A V package suitable? And do we really only use that microphone package for one, that microphone and lighting package for one event per year?
No, our, our junior high is, Alex Brown's here, our junior high is used for student assemblies, it's, it's used.
But the, but, student assemblies don't require thirty-two microphones, and people aren't changing colors of lights and putting spotlights on people.
No, I mean, you could go with a, a very basic package with the junior high, I'm sure that they can present that. But that's not the only cost that's with the junior high, um, I believe that also the lobby is included. And we had a long discussion about that as well, because, you know, it was kind of the running joke about the paneling. But what is actually driving up the cost is because you're gonna have to do extensive work in the, the junior high auditorium. That means you're also going to have to upgrade the bathrooms, like, you can't do one without the other. And because of the way the bathrooms are situated, which was explained to John, John explained to us today. Was that you have to, it, it's going to impact the, um, lobby of the auditorium, it's all, it's all interconnected. So, you can't really do the auditorium without doing the bathrooms, and you can't do the bathrooms without, like, doing something with the, the lobby. Because you have to meet A D A requirements.
So, this is all hinged on A D A compliance?
Yes. The, the bathroom, but the way the bathrooms are situated, with the placement with the lobby.
Wheelchair accessible, accessibility in each.
Yeah, I'm trying to think, like, the way that the doors open, like, they probably might need to.
Yeah, none of the, uh, the doors aren't the right, right, the right width. And the toilet stalls are not, you cannot turn around in a wheelchair, they don't have all those, uh, they don't meet those requir- requirements today.
Okay, so you're gonna have to take the space from?
No, 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 it's gonna be the same footprint.
Okay.
Um, and I don't, I don't have in our presentation, uh, sort of a suggested retail layout that the architect has done for us to do pricing. Um, but essentially, where the sinks are today is where the toilets will go. And in order to get the space in and meet the A D A, A D A requirements, it's gonna be in the same footprint. So, we're not gonna move stairs that are in the lobby to go up to the L, L G I rooms. Um, essentially, the, from the lobby, the footprint will be the same. Uh, but inside the bathrooms, that will be substantially redone.
So, what would you be doing to the lobby that's A D A compliant? I, I'm sorry if I'm not getting.
So, the lobby itself, um, is, uh, the, it's related to the bathrooms, but not. I mean, the lobby floors are in great shape, getting in and out of the lobby, like, the doors, uh, we're not touching the exterior doors. Um, those are in serviceable condition, so your question is, does the lobby need to change because of A D A? And the answer is no.
But the, but the wall, you said the paneling.
Yeah, the paneling.
You, you, they'd have to do something with that.
Yeah, so, when we're redoing the footprint of the bathroom, there, there will be impact to some of the paneling. So, uh, we're just looking, sort of like, if we knock a hole in the wall here, and when we put it back, we have to paint, are we gonna match the same color, the same materials? Uh, the paneling is from nineteen sixty-nine, it doesn't make it good or bad, but it does make it aged to perfection perhaps. And, uh, when we take paneling off and put it back up, it's gonna be an obvious change. So, typically, we would go to a corner, something like that, so that it architecturally makes sense.
It'll, it'll look prettier, absolutely, unless you're really attached to the paneling, but it has to be done because of the background, not because.
So, you're just taking the paneling off and painting it?
I personally really like the fixture, and I made that very clear to them the other day, that's in the lobby, I think it's very cool, so.
So, are we putting up new paneling? Is it new paneling, or is it just like?
The finish, the finish that would go back in, the drywall, and there's choices to make here. Um, but the paneling would be removed and not returned, uh, there would be drywall put in. Right now, we have tile wainscoting that's priced in the project up to, I think it's six feet, five feet, and then painted drywall above that. New ceilings, if you look, I don't always go into a room and look up, except I like to see, oh, those are L E D lights, great. But, if I see a ceiling that is stained and old, um, it's noticeable for those who look up. Usually, I'm walk, looking where I'm going, so I don't see the ceiling. But, as an observant person developing a project, that ceiling needs to be replaced, it's not aged to perfection.
What is the, uh, folding partitions item that's in the, uh, the junior high?
So, today. History with folding partitions.
Yes.
So, those partitions were original, and they are a quilling, coiling type. If you think of a Venetian blind, it's, has vertical slats, turn it on its side, this has. Sorry, vertical slats.
Uh-huh.
And the mechanism pulls almost like a window shade, uh, two coiling, uh, partitions that come out and form the wall. There's a track at the ceiling and a track at the floor.
This is on the sta- on the stage we're talking.
This is not, this is the large group.
This is the back of the auditorium.
It's where the, it's where the folding chairs are, where we've taken.
There are actually two classrooms that would be closed all by partition.
Is that that auxiliary section that's back there?
Yes.
Okay, do we, do we need that?
We're, we're making two classrooms back there now.
We are.
Well, that's what it originally was, and it's just, we haven't used that space to its best capacity in years, because.
Do we, do we?
We stole the seats out for the front.
Do we really need to make two classrooms there? We, if we've been making do without it, what, what is the point of?
Well, Mr. Alex?
I, I think that, I think it, it might be a missed opportunity if we, if we don't do it. Only because the population in our buildings is constantly fluctuating. And, um, you never know if we're gonna need to take another music area and convert it into a classroom. And if we had to do that, that we could move a music class into that space. Um, so, I know it's a what-if, and nobody likes what-ifs, but just seeing the fluctuation in the population. That's the intention of, of those classrooms, and that's, that's what they were.
I, I, yes, to me, I'm looking at that as a potential.
Reduction of costs.
That could be reduced or taken off, because it doesn't seem like we need it immediately, uh, just my opinion.
Yeah, that's, I mean, you can remove anything you'd like.
I, I agree, only because, you know, you're telling me in one building, you wanna get rid of the partition walls, and now in this bu- building, you're seeing, yeah.
Can we take the partition walls from the one building and move them over to two?
Recycle them, that would be great.
Let's look at it another way, if we didn't do it, Dr. Heller, and then, let's just say, four years from now, you say. Population has required us to reduce the music classroom, we need to put it in there, really need to put two in there. Cause if you had one, they could just use the whole open area, right? So, it's only if you had two full classrooms needed, how long would it take that project? We voted on it in a meeting, how long would it take to finish just putting up the partitions?
Well, I'm assuming it's gonna require a little bit more than that, because it's actually, would probably be mechanical, they're not gonna be pulled. So, you'd have to put in the, the, the right, um, you know, floor, like, you know, tracks and get the wall. And it's a little bit more than a Wattens, because a Wattens is, is you actually move it. You, it's like a lock that you turn and you move, so this would probably be a little bit more complicated. I mean, I guess you could do like a Wattens, but it, yeah, it's just a, it's a higher ceiling, it's, it's just a little more.
These are motorized systems today, there would be motorized systems in the future. And, uh, so, the amount of work to put the partitions in is not insignificant. So, the tracks that are there are, would be removed, and, uh, a new track would be installed for the new ceiling syst- for the new partitioning system. From the ceiling, um, there's a minor amount of structural work that we would need to do. There's some ceiling, uh, configuration changes that would need to be possible. So, in short, if, if you were to approve that project, say, in four to six years or something like that, it would be a summer project. And right now, the lead time on those panels, um, is six to eight months.
I'm wondering, we have an L G I at the high school, how often does that room get used, and what is the purpose of it there?
Uh, the high school L G I room, Tom just stepped out, but that's, that's used all the time, every day.
Okay, can you share, like, what activities go on in there?
Uh, I know that it's used for a large group, well, Alicia's here, Alicia, what?
Do we still have study halls at the junior high? Um, I'm trying to think of reasons here, I'm trying to.
Well, and again, just to be clear, and tell me if I'm saying this wrong. You would need to downsize two classrooms in the junior high in order to pay back the use of both of those rooms. If you downsized one, you could still use that back area, correct?
You, you could, and, you know, it's, we're not married, we're not married to those spaces. It's just bringing that auditorium back to what it was, and that was the original footprint of the auditorium. If we want the footprint to change, and we don't feel like we need those instructional spaces any longer, then, you know, it certainly could be. The, the, the project could be completely changed, um.
I mean, the space can still be used, it's just not partitioned, it won't be partitioned.
Right, and then would we be adding the audiovisual, et cetera, to make it a classroom?
You, I don't believe that, that would necess- that would be necessary.
Yeah.
And one thing that we did price in this, all those, that back two rooms or the back area, every other seat would have the arm up. So, it could actually be used for testing or, or classrooms. I, I'd leave that in there if you weren't gonna put the partitions up, so at least, if it used as one testing area. Or one classroom area without.
And just another question, if we're cutting out the wrestling area, and we're planning on letting the rest, junior high wrestling or girls wrestling, whatever it is. Continue to use lounge, then presumably, you could take the current wrestling room and still make it storage. And get another classroom out of the woodshop right now, which was gonna be the wrestling.
But that would cost money to bring it up to code.
A million of, of dollars?
No, but.
Two hundred and sixty-two thousand?
Probably less than that, yeah.
Us today's prices, we don't know about next year, so.
I guess, my other question, uh. My other question, I'm just trying to understand with the junior high auditorium project, and again, I'm trying to figure out a way that we can make it all work without taking anything out, is. We're, I'm still stuck on the fact that we're spending one point five million dollars on an A V, a total A V package for the junior high. Um, and is that the most cost-effective thing that we could do for how the junior high gets used? Again, I understand that it gets used, I love that it gets used, I hope it gets used all the time. Uh, I'm, I'm not sure when Mr. Brown dances, if he has all the lights going and fading in and out or not. But, I don't know how many times that the actual theater lighting package gets used more than once a year. And my question is, for a junior high production, do we have a theater lighting package now that's sufficient? Do we have a P A microphone system right now that is sufficient? And I know the rigging needs to be done, that's clear, we know the curtains need to be, and I've seen those curtains, I know they're wrecked. But, the actual A V package, is it suitable to last?
What, what you have today in terms of the lighting system, uh, the dimmers are aged, uh, you know, those are quite old. So, there's, there would be a need to upgrade those at some point, you have an incandescent system. So, there's a lot of maintenance with those, even though there's relatively few burn hours, these lights are on quite a bit. Those lights are used hundreds of hours a year, as opposed to thousands of hours a year. But, the lo- lamps, uh, the lamp life is relatively short. And, over time, the, the number of lamps that are available in the marketplace is going down, just because L E D technology is available.
I'm sorry, are you talking about house lighting or stage lighting?
Yes.
Well.
Both.
But I understand that house lighting would be a project that would probably need to be done, because again, the auditorium gets used, that makes sense to me.
That'll, that's all tied in, that's all tied into the same dimmer panel today. So, house lights and theater lights are controlled by the same kinds of systems, whether it's brand new or the system that's there. But that's a, that's a very old system, and there, I don't know for sure that there are no parts, but it's likely that that's gonna be an issue. If something were to fail, it would not be able to be fixed easily or cost-effectively.
And what about using the current system in the high school and moving it over to the junior highs for our stage lighting and dimmer panels?
Um, you're, uh, the cost to move it would be, I mean, if you took a lamp down and plugged it in over there. I don't, I don't know enough about the lighting, dimming system in the high school, and if it's compatible with the fixtures in high school. Or compatible with the fixtures in the junior high.
I'm just trying to think outside the box here, cause I, I think that we don't use the, that theater A V system anywhere near the way. The amount we do the high school theater system, and if it was still an upgrade for them, if we could move it from the senior high to the junior high. Just trying to save a couple bucks and make it all work.
I think our recommendation is that we get the, a point-by-point proposal from our consultant. And bring it in and meet with stakeholders, that may be the board as well, and just go through and make sure are these systems. How would they be used, would they be used, is the, you know, bang worth the buck? And just make sure, um, you know, we're bringing best value to meet the needs.
John, how long does, if you were to replace it, how long does that last?
Um, the L E D lights last quite a long time compared to the incandescent lights. I, I don't know the burn hours, it's probably thousands instead of hundreds, um.
You got energy savings on top of it.
Well, there is, yeah, yeah, no, that's, that's what makes it work inside a project like this. Um, for us to be able to look at that, but the, um. Uh, the technology that'll be in place, like, any technology will age over time, but it's current. Um, well, we'd have to ask the lighting tech people how the technology has changed. But I know when I did auditoriums, the last, the first auditorium I did, uh, that converted to digital systems. Was about eight years ago, they're still using similar systems, um, today. The tech, some of the boards and technologies have changed, the lighting fixtures are way more versatile, um, in terms of color changing, and some are motorized. So, you can eliminate a number of lamps by having lamps at position, you don't have to have five lamps, you can now use one to do, uh. Those kind of, uh, positioning, push a button, it sets the lamp. Push a button, it sets the lamp for that scene. And so you're gonna have three or four lamps that'll set the scene, the next scene, the lamps will change for that scene. So you eliminate a certain number of fixtures, um, that would be stationary and go up catwalks or ladders to move them around. Um, once they're installed, they can be used in a whole variety of ways. So those are some things that would be, from a safety standpoint, you know, up on a ladder to adjust lights, that would be, uh, not a thing of the past, but much less, uh, common occurrence.
So looking at this then, I mean, the, the administration definitely recommended the junior high auditorium full package, um, so we would then be pulling, do we wanna pull that out? I mean, we kind of already agreed to it, but now we wanna pull it out?
What are we just gonna pull out?
The junior high auditorium.
It was in the original twen- it was in the twenty-seven million, it wasn't a red or
Right. Just to be clear, what's up there is a senior high school?
Correct, like, right, like I'm saying, you had junior high in as a definite must-do.
I, I don't, I, I don't know if anyone's in favor of pulling the entire, uh, junior high project out. I, I just know there, there were some things that were within that that I would like to see pulled out. Uh, I can't speak for everyone, but
I, yeah, so what I mean by that is like pulled out so we can like have more of a breakdown of Totally, I just meant
To dive deeper into the, the piece, yeah.
Yeah, like the junior high and the high school, or? What about the green, um, you know, economic benefit toilets?
Well, you're either paying for upgrades so we don't lose much water or paying for the astronomical water bill, so it's like a is it a wash? I mean, unless we can get a cost analysis on that, but I mean.
It's hard to put it into figures, but I mean, two hundred and ten thousand on a thirty seven million dollar loan. It's like, uh, just like getting the extra, i- i- it's like getting the sunroof on your car, not getting the sunroof on your car, I think, when you get to that point, right?
If we can find enough of those, we might be able to get up to a million.
Brian, what, Brian, if we took out, if we did it all, which is, I think, if I'm doing my math right, about thirty-seven million that we'd have to take out, right? Is that correct?
Yes.
What are we, you know, if we did this, you know, I think we were saying possibly upping it to a fifteen year, if we did it in a fifteen year, because we know you do have a crystal ball. Um, what are we looking at receiving in interest as, as revenue essentially? Back to the district a year?
Probably first year or so, about one point two million. Now, the one, one thing we aren't talking about, Chris, Christie and I talked about this, is you did reimbursement resolutions and none of this covers that. But the interest and the rebates would probably cover the four million dollars of reimbursement resolutions that you did for the junior high HVAC project, the tennis courts and the window film, and the window stuff.
The interest in rebates, you said?
Correct.
Over the fifteen years?
No, or the project itself, because I think we're, we're looking at two and a half million possibly in rebates, another one point two in interest plus maybe the following year, maybe a three or four hundred thousand interest, so that you could, instead of putting financing back your, your reimbursement resolution, take it in the back end from the rebates and interest that you did earn on the money.
Yeah, can you explain the interest, uh, o- o- on this, how does that accrue?
Uh, from the day you borrow to the day you spend it, so you know, i- if you borrowed fifteen or twenty or, or the full thirty-eight million, we're, we're talking eighteen months plus by the time we pay it out is twenty-four months.
Yeah.
So you'd be able to can, collect up to the, up to the, um,
So you're, you're talking about money sitting in a bank account?
Correct.
Okay. Those are based on
A little bit higher, but the interest rates you get are a lot higher.
Those are, those are based on the rate staying at where they're at.
Correct.
Um, which again, I'm the pessimist guy over here and I think
So you know that you're guaranteed at that, if they drop tomorrow, you still got the six-month CD rate.
Sure.
You know, right now, I think the, the sweet spot's six months on CDs, after six months, it actually goes down again.
For the short term.
Or you, or you could split the difference, instead, instead of taking back the four million dollars
Right.
You could take back two and then, you know, hopefully, you know, still earn the one million plus in interest. And then the two point five million, um, in the, in the rebate. And that, that'll get you, that'll get you, you know, over four.
So it sounds like at the very least, there's probably a pretty good chance that we'll be able to pay off the, the, uh, the existing junior high school.
Yeah, I'm not saying pay off, you wanted to have that rainy day fund down, down the road in case some Yep.
Right, yeah.
Reserve fund for unexpected.
I, I, I mean, I think this has been very informative for me. I know that John said that they have more work to do. I personally would really like to see a presentation from Jamie again to understand where we were at the twenty-two, where we're gonna be at, what'd you say it was, Allison, twenty-eight-five? Where we would be at thirty-two if we did the whole thing. How many years that looks like, what the administration thinks we can afford per year while maintaining the general budget. I think those are a lot of questions I have. I don't know that I can start making definitive decisions personally on what I wanna cut or what I don't wanna cut. Until I understand where we are per year, what we can afford, how long we're looking at taking it out. And I think once we understand that a little better, then we can, then we have both sides of the equation, then we can say, okay, we need to get to here. What's it gonna cost to get us there?
I, I was actually talking to Jamie today and he said he could come on the voting meeting if you want a presentation at, which would be two weeks, as long as it's seven o'clock, because it's in Philadelphia up to five.
So Yeah, I think that would be great to do the twenty-eight and a half, twenty-eight and a half, and then the, like, the full price there, that's that thirty-two and a half.
So originally, we were going to try to, uh, the timeline that you were shooting for Brian was voting on the the updated parameters resolution in October, I believe is what you were saying, so it sounds like that's going to get pushed um, into November at least.
Yeah, we, we could do it for committee meeting in November or even a later, you know, date. I think talking to Jamie thinks he can still close for the end of the year. Now, now his, you know, I asked him about the fifteen million. You know, I wanted to try close this year, because if you do fifteen million, you don't have to worry about the arbitrage and make it more than your actual interest rate that you're being charged, you can actually make more and not have to pay back the IRS.
Yeah.
So, you know, um, that's why I wanted to try to close on one of those before the end of the year, so they could have the tax savings or, you know, possible tax savings.
But we don't have to spend it, so
Right.
We already know we're spending fifteen million.
But if you make more money on, on the, uh, interest, then, then you're, you're paying the bond holders, that money gets turned over.
But that's what I'm saying, like, if we know, if, if everybody here is confident that we're gonna spend at least that fifteen million, because that covers a part of the HVAC at the high school.
Right.
Um, why can't we still vote on that in October? Because we don't have to spend it, we're not, we're not making any commitment to the projects.
Actually, you already did. You already did in the original parameters resolution.
What's that?
The voting for, to be able to take out the loans.
So then, so then, do we need to vote again, is what you're saying?
Thirty million dollar parameters resolution is approved.
Maximum, but my, my concern is if we put it out there, the bond holders will say, well, what's your next project or what are you actually gonna spend?
Correct.
If there's this, you know, hey, you might be spending twenty-five million or it might be spending thirty-five million, that's a big difference. The rating and everything else, so you, you have to divulge or be transparent to the
Yeah, so we, we need to know what we're gonna be working on with that money that we're borrowing.
What are you planning on doing the high school, Brian?
Next summer, but
Plan.
Well, on side of just saying plan, it's how much you're really gonna spend over the next two or three years, if you're gonna borrow thirty million, they wanna know that now. Because if you go borrow the second half, you know, they're gonna hit you with a downgrade because you, they'll hold you five months before, or six months before.
So, yeah, so we have to decide how much we'll borrow.
Correct.
Off the top.
And you actually probably have until mid-November to do that.
Yeah.
You know, so they, they put together the final package before they go out to sell the bonds.
So as long as we get that figured out by November, it's not gonna delay anything at the, uh, to, to start on the senior high next year.
As long as HVAC controls are still with four to six months, so yeah, it probably won't delay.
Yeah, the, the control for any of the companies right now, the lead time for most of the products is, is probably two to three at most.
Yeah. And like, uh, the, the most important is to make sure we can open up again in September, so I, I wanna make sure everything's here before they take something else, and that's all we did with the junior high. We knew the, the AVs weren't gonna be into September, that still gave us, you know, complete heat air conditioning, just we didn't, weren't able to, to, uh, vary the speeds, but we never could vary them before at the junior high, so I didn't have a problem with that. But I'd have a problem if I didn't have something that would not allow us to have the school back. Am I correct on that?
Yes, uh, I, I have no concerns if, if we are able to, um, for the high school, any of the work to be able to accomplish that next summer, and next summer is in quotes. We will do a detailed scheduling exercise and any work that we can do second shift before students are out of school, we would, we would work closely with, you know, everybody to make sure that that's possible. We would not be just doing any work during the day to impact the education mission. Um, but if we need to take a ceiling down, the students would come back the next day and see the ceiling that's gone, everything would be cleaned up. Um, if we need to put in a pipe, we would do that at night, those sort of things. Um, we would want to look at some flexibility there to be able, it's a fair amount of work to put in place. And as soon as we have approval, one of our first steps is to do scheduling of the project. Make sure we understand exactly what needs to be done when, and then work with the school district to make sure that, uh, you know, how, how the project can go, so we get as much done, much work done before school is out. And then, once school is out, it'll be, um, heavy left to get it done. But we've done this, I've had experience doing these kind of projects, um, quite a bit, so I'm not concerned about getting it done as long as we have a good plan. And we will work closely with the school district to make sure we have that in place. Thank you. Um, so I have a question for administration on timeline here, so if the board wants to wait until after we hear from PFM, which is gonna be on ten seventeen, are we suggesting then a special meeting after ten seventeen to then discuss the individual project line items to see what we want to take off? If anything.
That, that would be my suggestion, that we schedule another meeting to go over this one more time, but I think it would be a, a good for all of us to hear specifically what you would like to have more detail on. I'm assuming the auditoriums with the lighting and audio packages. And then obviously at the junior high, the removal of the, uh, the additional classrooms that you'd like them removed. And the, uh, information that John provided, I believe already gives you the breakdown of the high school auditorium, uh, line by line with the flooring and the seats. So you could see the itemized cost of that, um, and then in there also is now included the basic package uh, for that auditorium, so, or would you like more detail for the high school auditorium as well, or um, what is the game plan for that one?
I, I think it would be beneficial if we're gonna be going over the auditoriums, uh, the work for the auditoriums, we probably should have that, that detail.
Yeah, I mean, I don't like this concept of, well, let's just slash this project. Because I think this project is much more than a project, right? It is a seating project, it is a flooring project, it's an HV product, it's a rigging project. There's so many pieces to this project, that for us to just put a big X on it, I don't know that that makes sense either, right? We know that there's some big ticket items buried in that project cost, that even if we couldn't do the whole thing, but we could get new seating and new flooring, like, that's a big step in the right direction, right? Because we started this entire concept with, this is where we are with pieces of our property that can no longer function, right? We, if we had to do something, the lights and the microphones still work. I understand that there's conduit, and, and I'm not that smart, I'm just saying that we need a new floor in the junior high and we need new seats in the junior high. And in order to do that, we have to bring everything to ADA code, we understand all that. But how do we get kinda, uh, how do we get a little bit of everything we want, but maybe not everything we want? And, and find that pocket, or does, does Jamie come back and we find out that the difference between spending twenty-eight and a half and thirty-three? I don't wanna say it's insignificant because it's five million dollars and that's a lot of money to anybody, right? But we may find out that it still makes better fiscal sense than, like I've said right from the beginning, if we raise taxes, are we gonna pull that back then the next year?
Right.
Because I think that's important for us to realize, is that we just keep adding that, we keep adding that revenue into the district from on the taxpayers' backs, unless we give it back.
And am I correct in assuming that we have no interest in adding back the wrestling room and we would not like to entertain um, adding anything in to replace the turf? Cause the turf will need to be replaced in five years? Brian?
I thought we would, uh, get enough The bond, the first series or the first few series of bonds?
Yep, so it lasts, it'll last for five years, but that was in the scope of the original.
Twenty twenty-nine, we'll stop paying on the, on the, the first set of bonds?
And And the, and the walls, uh, a Watten, should we, should we add that back in, should we add that back in? The broken, yes, the broken one is still in there, but the rest of them we have removed, so are we, um, should we add that back in, or are we comfortable with keeping that out, that, cause that was one of the reds?
I think we need to see the dollars in.
Okay, all right, so we'll come up
Would be helpful, because if we're talking about getting rid of the, you know, over three hundred thousand to do these partitions in the auditorium for the junior high, and maybe it makes sense more to just do that with the, you know, with the wood shop.
I think the question is, I mean, can you put, can you do similar, I, I understand the club put in lounge, I don't know that the club should be I don't know, we should put that on the backs of the club to do a second room.
Mm-hmm.
Um, the question would be, could we make that room a wrestling space that can also be used as a multifunctional space, because we don't have to put, you know, wall-to-wall mats in there, you know. Uh, we could go with the medium, which is to have tear-out mats like they have in lounge.
Yeah.
I understand that they don't last as long, I understand that it's wear and tear on them, but could that, I guess the question is, is that a space that we can utilize for more than just wrestling? If we were able to do wrestling wall mats and then tear out floors?
I'm, I'm sure that we could, so what I, what I think I'm hearing is that you'd like us to add back, um, these projects, maybe scale some of them back, like the wrestling room and get rid of the partitions in the auditorium. And, um, work with Jamie, uh, in giving him these figures to come up with um, various scenarios of the, of the price points, um, for what that would look like for a repayment. So we have an idea of, of, of long-term, what this means for the district.
I have a suggestion, um, I've encountered this many times. Um, call it the X factor, call it the squawk factor, call it the noise factor, call it the Facebook factor, call it the, who, who's gonna come to the podium factor. If we don't do some of these, let's say we didn't do any of these red, uh, projects. Who, who are we likely to hear from, and is that something we need to consider as we're deliberating here?
I don't, I don't know that we'll hear specifically from anybody, I, I think the wrestling team would very much appreciate having I don't, I don't know that we'll hear specifically from anybody. I I think the wrestling team would very much appreciate having an additional space. I think if you use it as a multi-purpose space, I I think that perhaps our cheerleaders could potentially use that as well. We have a. Very large um junior high cheerleading team, high school cheerleading team and 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 rec team, so.
They took up half the parade.
Yeah, they they really did, um, and and I'm a cheer mom, so you know, like, I have a cute little cheerleader, so. You know, I think there's definitely options for other groups to use that, um, and that would be great. Um, I think that, you know, knowing our our community and how they um support our music program. I think that obviously if our our music families are listening to this conversation, there's an invested interest that. We we bring up our auditoriums because it is an educational opportunity for our kids. Um, not just the acting, but also, as John said, the experience behind the controls. You know, kids will go into that field. Do I think that any one of those groups or individuals will come to the board meeting? I'm not sure that they will, but that's. Say that they don't have an expressed interest in ensuring that there's great educational opportunities. Activities for their kids to participate in, that's that's what we're here for.
But just to be clear, we're not, we're not closing the auditorium. It has lights and mics that work right now and control panels. Right, but I just like, so for people that are listening, right, we're not saying we're taking plays away, like we have a.
Says he doesn't want Broadway, I just wanna, I wanna make that clear.
I I just feel like we have to be clear, right? We're trying to make projects work for everybody, but we do have a functional space right now that works. We're not saying if we don't do this project, the space is not functional.
No, it's it's functional, but you know, the the junior high is in bad shape. Let's face it, we've all been in there. It's it's not great. Um, the high school is is a is a nice space. Um, it it has some wear and tear. I mean, it is from nineteen ninety two, not saying that that was in a great year.
No, I have good news. It it really didn't open until March nineteen ninety four. So we have two extra years there.
That makes, that makes it better, that makes it better. Um, but you know, like everything else, you you have to keep up with it, you have to upgrade it. You you know, you want it to be a nice place for our kids, that's. Again, that's what we're here for, this is what we do. Um, so.
If we could um see at the next meeting or at some future meeting, a list of the projects in red. Supplemented with the kind of information you just gave us here, what other uses could be made of them? Uh, what are, what are the, what's the downside of not doing them? What are the benefits of doing them? Which is goes beyond the numbers. I call it the human factor, maybe I should use that phrase. Good and bad, just a separate sheet. Here, here are the projects in red. I think it would allow us, it would allow me to make a better decision.
Yeah, that's that's our problem.
Thank you.
And I wanted to say thank you to the administration for all this hard work. I do feel like you listened to us from the last meeting. And I know this was hard to do, but you did a really good job of this, thank you.
Thank you. We just wanted to make sure everybody had as the options and again, it's a discussion and. You know, I know, I know it's a lot of money. I know it's a a big decision and, you know, we're taking it very seriously and. And John and Sherry have been amazing. Their team's been great, so thank you to them. Um, we've had, we're spending a lot of time together. It's been great, so.
I do have a question. Besides, obviously financing this and getting grants or the rebates, do we have any opportunities for grants or any other type of? Capital fundraising?
Something that keeps on being thrown around from the state called Plan Con two point O. But it keeps on being thrown around. Uh, the latest version of that would be a maximum of five million dollars. For an energy efficient project. So part of this might go on that, but it's it's um. Grant, but it's also need finance, so I don't see us getting that the first year or two. It'll go to the the more needier districts if that comes out. But it's not like the old Plan Con where they basically covered all your interest charges and you had free money, you know, they paid you back. We're still getting money back on the one from Plan Con there. You know, it's a tune about seven hundred thousand a year. So this is basically a grant that's gonna go through PCCD and has a lot of uh. What we call, things attached to it.
So what you're saying is every, any kind of grant we get is through PDE or or the state?
Coming out that uh the infrastructure bill, there's supposedly money in there for walk, like the schools. If that comes out, I'm applying for redoing the bridge down here, so we have sidewalks between here and the junior high and. Those types of things, um, because that's the only thing we'll qualify for. But who knows, maybe there's something else coming.
I I have a question for the board. If there is interest, I know, you know, these meetings can go on, um, if there's interest in meeting uh next week. We are available to go through for that line by line in and out. Some of the lines. Can be eliminated with with little consequence or may not be attached to other things. Some of the lines, there are some contingencies and attachments, so. You know, if you keep a door in, you have to keep the paint in and you have to keep door hardware, you know, those kind of things are linked. So it's, um, you can certainly go through and say, okay, I don't really like that, I don't want that. But there would be another level to say, so are there any interdependencies that we need to consider? So if we don't put the partitions in, what do we do with the ones that are there? Leave them, keep the track in, take the track out, you know, so there's things like that that we would. Wanna go through and and talk, so may not.
Sorry, it it sounds like that discussion will probably be scheduled the week of the twenty third is from what.
Yeah, I would I would wanna wait till after we hear from Jamie to kind of get the financial information from him first.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you.
All done, Mr. Bell?
Doctor hearing, that is it for my committee report.
You did a fabulous job, I appreciate it.
Oh, yes, yeah, go ahead.
We're we're gonna move one thing forward on your.
Oh, yes, I have, yes, I have one item to move forward to the voting, thank you.
Thank you. Um, no one signed up for public comments, so we're gonna be moving forward the following items to our October seventeenth voting agenda. The meeting minutes, um, item three A. Three C, three D, four A. Five A, five B, five C, five D, five E. Uh, six and six A. And that's it? Are there any board members that would like to be heard at this time? No? Okay, if nothing happens, we'll be holding an executive session after this meeting to address personnel matter. And our next meeting will be our voting meeting Tuesday, October seventeenth at seven o'clock.